Okay, good evening. At six o'clock, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with an invocation led by Councilmember Fugit, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Smith. Please rise as you're able.
Thank you for today and the wonderful work we got to do on behalf of the city in our budget hearings. It makes me more mindful of how lucky we are to live in a city with so many people dedicated to its success. Also, remind us tonight to keep all our citizens in our hearts and minds as we make decisions and understand that through respect and speaking, our viewpoint, we can come to better decisions. Amen.
Please face the flag if you're able.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, would you please co-roll?
Councilwoman Fugit?
Here.
Councilwoman Helsley?
Here.
Councilwoman McKenzie?
Here.
Councilwoman Parker?
Here.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Here.
Councilwoman Singh?
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Here.
And Councilwoman Thomas.
Here.
All members present, mayor.
Okay, is there a motion on the minutes from our last meeting?
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any items to be withdrawn? Any, oh, Vice Mayor Smith. Okay. Any items to be postponed? Any items to be added by motion? Is there, are there consent items?
No, ma'am.
No, okay. All right, we'll move right along to my report. First of all, I know you all have been here since 8:00 a.m. and several of you were also at a two-hour-plus community meeting last night and everything else going on, so I just want to thank you for all the hard work you do every day, but today in particular, you guys are putting in the long, hard hours, so I appreciate it, and we'll do our best to make sure this meeting goes as efficiently as you all want it to go. I know that makes for a long day, but your work is, you know, essential to the functioning of our city, and I appreciate your diligence and attention to the budget. I know that over thirty different department heads and city leaders presented to you today, so it's a lot of information, and hopefully all the questions that were asked were answered, and there'll be more discussions coming up. As you know, for the last couple of years, we have, at your request, made sure there's a full month between first and second reading of the budget, so we will digest the discussions that you all had today, and feel free to reach out, and then there'll be second reading two weeks from today. On a more festive note, in case you missed the first one last week, our concerts on the Square Series is now underway. There will be jazz every Tuesday in May, June, and September. I don't know, rain or shine, it's happening, some rain is happening right now. So jazz every Tuesday in May, June, and September, and variety Thursdays through the summer, and these are free outdoor concerts to everyone in the community, and please invite every you, you all, council members and community members to enjoy some of the shows this season. The complete schedule is on the website. A reminder about our rules of decorum, we are here to do the city's official business. Those who wish to speak either to a specific agenda item or during public forum need to sign up with the City Recorder before 4:00 p.m. Do not use profanity, and when speaking to specific agenda items, you must stay on topic. Remarks must be germane to the question ahead of the assembly. That is, statements must have bearing on whether the pending motion should be adopted. Those who fail to adhere to these rules will be ruled out of order. For those who are listening, please note, if you disrupt a public meeting, you will be asked to leave or escorted out. Thank you in advance for everyone's respect for these rules, and that concludes my report. Are there any reports of council members? Okay, moving right along to item 8A.
8B is a resolution confirming the reappointment of Jonathan Haskell and the appointment of Brian Brooks and Valerie Reed to the Police Advisory and Review Committee.
Move to approve.
Okay, motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember McKenzie?
Well, I just want to thank them. I don't know if they're here.
Yes, I was gonna, I never, I didn't always want to recognize them until after the vote, because, yeah, okay. Well, the Police Advisory Committee does great work, and we appreciate them, and several of the people who are being, I think Brian Brooks and Valerie Reed are both here, so if you could raise your hand, thank you for being willing to serve, and wow, that's auspicious, I'm sure, you know. Anyhow, seeing no further questions or discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and again, thank you for your service, and thank you Director Krum for being here as well. Okay, moving right along, next item, please.
9C is an ordinance to close unapproved Caffago Avenue within City Block 26876, running from Hackman Street to its dead end at Maynard Glen Fields Park, and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the adjacent property owner's first district.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute all documents on behalf of the City of Knoxville necessary to acquire property for the Broadway Streetscapes project by negotiated purchase or by condemnation if necessary within eight tracts of real property for a total amount not to exceed $1,072,600.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any, Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, I just wanted to make some comments for the record. There've been, there were some, some community members who noticed this was on the agenda, and I think we'll get Mr. Claybo to give like a thirty-minute summary of where we go next. This is our right-of-way phase. Councilman Thomas and I both have been along with this project for quite a long haul, and I think a lot of times, it's hard to understand why some of these things take so long, but my understanding, Mr. Claybo, is that it is, we get funding through the state for different phases of the project, and now we're at the right-of-way phase.
That's, that's correct. Tom Claybo, Engineering Director. So, the good news is, it is eighty percent federal funds, twenty percent local, so it helps us stretch our local dollars. The, we have, with this right-of-way phase, eight properties affected, they're commercial, so you see the cost is a little bit higher than what you would normally see with the Greenway, but the project includes that missing section of Greenway from around Cecil Avenue up to Fulton High School.
So this is gonna be a connection, and one of the constituents that reached out to me, and so I said, I appreciate you noticing that this is moving forward, I want to say thank you to you guys in engineering. I know this is the third redesign of this. The first was a budding Broadway, and we want a little better protection for people that might be walking or biking along that route. We weren't able to make the second work out, which would have been on the opposite side of the creek, and this third design puts a little buffer between Broadway 441, correct, Mr. Claybo?
That, that's correct, yes.
Okay, and then some other design elements that are coming into the project. But anyway, I think you've said before, this will probably end up breaking ground in 2026 or so?
Yeah, we're expecting spring of 2026.
Okay, all right. Well, I look forward to coming back for the ribbon cutting, because I will be long gone from up here, but I'm excited that we're, we're getting there, and I appreciate Councilwoman Thomas's work on some of these, long before I came along too, I think, just because it's been a progress. With a lot of existing properties, it takes a while.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryder. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with LJA Engineering Incorporated to provide construction engineering and inspection services for the CIPP IV Phase II project in an amount not to exceed $113,200.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I know, it's, speak up loud. I left some windows open at home too, so I'm excited about that. Anyhow, moving right along.
11F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract with Cannon &amp; Cannon Incorporated to provide design and construction phase services for improvements to an existing gravel parking lot located along Island Home Avenue under Jamesite Parkway, increasing the contract amount by $49,100 for a new contract total of $140,000, $140,000, $100.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to give a shout-out to the merchants on Sevier Avenue that brought this up years ago and brought it up again as this corridor is under construction, and I want to thank the mayor and her administration for being responsive to the needs. It's not easy to be under construction, and this is not just gonna serve the next year, it's gonna serve a lot of years after, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Cannon &amp; Cannon Incorporated to provide staff augmentation services on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed $49,500.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract with Southern Constructors Incorporated for the Augusta Quarry amenities Phase II project, increasing the contract amount by $141,506.61 for a new contract total amount of $3,767,296.99.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, mayor. I see Mr. Soward in the audience. Would you come up? I couldn't have you join us to not, not say a few words. Would you tell members of the public what to expect from this and when we hope it can open?
Yep, thanks, West Order Villas Coordinated with the city. We are in the final push to get construction completed on the project. The docks look awesome, the buildings look awesome. It's gonna be safer, more inviting, family-friendly environment for everybody to come visit, so we're hopeful that we'll have the completion of the project in the next few weeks, but it's still summer 2025 opening, but we don't have a firm date. I hope we can share a ribbon-cutting event, and I hope everybody comes and swims in the quarry out off the center-floating platform when we have that, but it's gonna be a great space when we get it open.
Yeah, I have to give Wes some props. He gave, gave me a walkthrough a few weeks ago, and I brought a couple of my kids, and one of them accidentally threw a rock and hit Wes, and he handled it like a champ. So I was telling him the other day that it's gonna open this summer, and he says, is that the place where I threw the rocket that guy? And I said, yeah.
He still has an invitation for the.
No rock throwing.
He hasn't been banned yet, that's good. He can't be banned until it opens, so thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Seeing no further questions or discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number two to agreement number C-24-0234 with GCE Construction in an amount not to exceed $4,771.75 related to the City-County Building, six-floor renovations for a new total contract amount not to exceed
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed to Tiffany Foster and Reed Matthew Foster for one parcel of property located at 2100 Washington Avenue, parcel ID number 082JX010, within limits of the City of Knoxville pursuant to the Homemakers Program for a contract sales price of $100,000.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Parker?
I just wanted to comment that I raised this project during the budget hearings as a good example of creative ways to use our tools to bring some affordable housing into the neighborhood. This Homemakers property, once the property, I guess, well, property sold, and then a single-family home built on the property, but in addition to a two-bedroom, one-bathroom basement rental that will be for, that will be rented at eighty percent or below area median income. So having those restrictions in place that help us provide housing options at different price points and for those needing that subsidized housing, I think is really needed, and I appreciate seeing it, especially in our neighborhoods where the housing costs are getting or have been, but are, continue to be beyond what current residents can, can even afford. So really appreciate seeing this project.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to extend the contract National Institute of Criminal Justice Reform to manage implementation of community violence intervention programming, provide technical assistance to the City of Knoxville, and provide training on group violence reduction strategies for the City of Knoxville and community partners for an amount not to exceed $519,750 for a total contract amount not to exceed $826,800.
Okay, council members, we have several people who've signed up to speak on this item. We'll start with those who signed up to speak in favor. First is Makia Harrison. Is Makia Harrison present? Okay. Next is Darius Elshabaz. Darius Elshabaz, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Darius Elshabaz, I'm an executive director of Formed Futures. It's a local nonprofit. I've been working in nonprofit work, just violence reduction, food insecurity, a lot of different things over the years, saving our son's program with the city, a lot of stuff over the years from 2009 up, but I just want to talk about basically the city investing in peace. I'm not asking the city to just invest in the community organizations, I'm asking you to invest in peace. In Knoxville, the battle against gun violence is fought daily, daily, not only by police, but by outreach workers, mentors, pastors, survivors, and volunteers embedded within the neighborhoods most affected. These grassroots organizations are the front line in violence prevention, yet their lifeline, support from the city, is often fragile, inconsistent, or insufficient. While violent crime has declined in recent years, their progress is neither accidental nor guaranteed. It is the result of hard-won trust and tireless, underfunded efforts by local groups that need and deserve more robust investment from city leadership. The human stories behind the numbers, it shows us, it's easy to cite statistics, but numbers don't capture the funeral after a teenager's life is cut short. The trauma in a child's eyes after hearing gunshots outside their window are the exhaustions of a community leader doing crisis response work for free. Since 2021, Knoxville has seen the following shifts in violent crime. In 2021, there were forty-one homicides, and it marked the devastating spike in violence. In 2022, it was a fifteen percent drop to thirty-five percent homicides, but non-fatal shootings remained high at seventy-eight. In 2023, further decline to twenty-four homicides and seventy-six non-fatal shootings. In 2024, we had, believe, twenty-three homicides and forty-two non-fatal shootings, and that's a forty-five percent drop. These improvements are not just policing victories, they're also the outcome of boost on-the-ground work, mediators diffusing conflicts before they explode, outreach workers walking the same blocks as shooters, and local organizations providing mentorship and intervention. We have a fragile infrastructure, but we can fix it. Despite their impact, local organizations face existential threats due to unstable city support. The city's 2025 decision to end its partnership with Turn Up Knox has sent a chilling message to those working in violence prevention. While transparency and accountability are essential, abandoning community groups without a sustainable plan risks unraveling the very progress Knoxville has made. Most of these organizations operate on slim budgets relying on volunteers, donated spaces, and inconsistent grants. Their work saves lives, but is emotionally draining and financially unsustainable without meaningful long-term investment. We need community-led solutions. Public safety is not solely the domain of law enforcement. Lasting change comes from community-driven, culturally competent, and locally trusted organizations to truly reduce violence long-term. Knoxville needs to treat violence, one, treat violence prevention as essential infrastructure. Just as the city funds roads and police, it must consistently fund violence interruption, trauma recovery, and reentry programs. Two, center, live, experienced. The people best positioned to reduce violence are those often who've been closest to it. Their expertise should be compensated, not exploited. Three, build accountability without punishment. Instead of pulling funding at the first sign of trouble, we can offer support and management, training, and compliance for grassroots partners. Four, if you could please, make room at the table for us. Policy conversations must include the voices of community leaders, survivors, youth, and nonprofit workers, not just city officials and local police. The reduction in homicide and shootings in Knoxville is encouraging but fragile. The front line of that progress, the community workers who risk their safety, give their time, and bear the emotional weight of this work cannot do it alone. If Knoxville is serious about safety, equity, and long-term change, it must go beyond contracts and check-ins. We must commit to co-owning this work with those who've already sacrificed the most. Anything less risks losing the progress we fought so hard to achieve, and the last thing I say to you all is, R.I.P. to my brother-in-law, Justin Taylor. He was one of those children that was murdered in 2021. So I'm personally affected on multiple levels by this, but I don't want it to be overcome by emotion, the work that we have to do, but we are here to do the work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak in favor is Terry Walker Smith. Smith, Walker Smith, present?
Yes.
If you could make your way to the podium and then state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
My name is Terry Walker Smith, and I reside at 6914 Wright Road, Knoxville, Tennessee, 379, 31. And first, I want to say I'm deeply grateful to the City Council for the opportunity to speak before you today. I would like to thank the American Canon, Lekendra Middlebrook, and Gwen McKenzie, Gwen McKenzie and Star for always supporting mothers who have lost their children to homicide and the children that are left behind with the reef event, and this will be the tenth year. And I also want to thank Amelia Parker for being a listening ear. And first, I want to start off by saying, again, my name is Terry Walker Smith, and my son was tragically shot, shot to death due to senseless gun violence. I share my story to support others and other mothers who have lost their children to a homicide in hopes to prevent this such tragedy. And to put a, to put a face to, to the name Christopher Lynn Macbeth, this is my child, this is my son that was shot and killed. Well, there are many organizations in the community that do violence reductions. There are many parts to reduction in gun violence. It's not just your part or my part, it's our part. But there are many parts to prevention, intervention and intervention beyond just interruption, including the many things that I, that I have done, prevention and intervention on a state level in Tennessee and a national level in Washington, DC. I have supported many organizations that do this work, as many others that do the work without being part of an organization, and I want to continue this work. I am in support and favor of this proposal for training to enhance the work that has been done in our city. It has been said that a mind is a terrible thing to waste, and the training that has been offered is a terrible thing to waste because someone's life may depend on it. With that being said, as a mother who has lost a son to gun violence, and a grandson who was almost caught up himself with no one to assist, I am committed to doing, to doing my part in this work, and training is the key. If it should be offered to anyone in the, and it should be offered to anyone in the community who is willing without being just a part of one particular organization, and if there is anyone in this city that has offered that, that the Office of Community Safety is offering, would there be such conflict among us? Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're switching over to people who sign up to speak in opposition to this item. We'll start with Chris Battle. Please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Good evening. My name is Chris Battle, 417 North Castle, 37914. I'm the pastor of Fern Street Missionary Baptist Church, Executive Director of Battlefield Farm, and Board Member of Justice Knox. I'm representing tonight Justice Knox, a collaboration of twenty-four faith congregations from diverse backgrounds across the city, working together to do justice. Tonight, Justice Knox asks you to vote no or to vote for a delay in approving the city's proposed contract with NICJR. We ask this not because we are opposed to the city's work with NICJR. In fact, we think they've done great work in our city. Continued work with them is essential for our city's violence reduction strategy. The people on the ground doing this work, violence interrupters, life coaches, law enforcement, faith leaders, mental health, hospital providers, city staff, they all need the continued support, training, and data analysis from NICJR. We are asking you to vote no or to ask for a delay in approving the contract because we don't agree with the scope of the work proposed. They are being asked to hire, train, and manage five violence interrupters over the next year, and to create a structure for local management of the program after the year. We've been told they are hired from our local community, which makes sense, given that deep community knowledge is critical to the success of this work. But the fact is that more than one existing local organization, Turn Up Knox, Renounce, Denounce, already employs NICJR. Their efforts have yielded proven lifesaving results. Their work in coordination with law enforcement and others led to a thirty-three percent reduction in fatal shootings in 2023, with a smaller but continued reduction last year. In 2024, this work resulted in more than a fifty percent reduction in non-fatal shootings. What will be gained in removing our local, successful, violent interrupters from their current organizations or in hiring a new one altogether? Why not work with the violence interrupters already hired and trained in our existing organizations? Why not strengthen the capacity of those organizations so no new structure is needed? I know that our existing violence interrupter organizations are ready to work together and to share local funding available to pay them for this lifesaving work. One thought is, maybe NICJR could provide intensive training and support over the next year for two city-funded violence interrupters, two from Renounce, Denounce, three for Turn Up, or vice versa, or maybe even a third organization like Safe Haven to be included. During that time, NICJR could also provide needed organizational support for those agencies to continue the work after the year is finished. This is just one idea of how this could be reworked. My point is, we're not asking for a delay to kill this work or for. My point is, we're not asking for a delay to kill this work or for a delay's sake. We're asking for a delay to get things right. We've been getting this right for the last few years, but friction has arisen among the stakeholders. Let's fix the friction. Let's restore the relationships we need in order to save lives. We learned from NICJR last night that they would take 30 days to hire their violence interrupters. Let's spend that, those 30 days figuring out how to better define the relationships between our current violent interrupters. NICJR, city staff, and other experts needed. Again, I don't ask for this delay lightly. This work impacts me and my family personally. In 2020, my junior high school daughter, who was attending Vine, jumped up in my bed crying and said, Daddy, I don't want to live here anymore, I want to move back to Cincinnati. I said, Why, baby? She said, Because the last three people killed, I knew them. She was in junior high. That same year, I had to console my 10-year-old son hiding under my bed because he heard our neighbor getting shot at in the alley behind our house. This work is important, it's urgent, and I don't want to go back to where we were three years ago. No one in this room wants that. Let's get this back on track so that together we can continue to save lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up is Andre Canty, Canty? Is Mr. Canty here? There, there he is. If you could come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address counsel.
Hey, what's going on? Andre Canty, 37924. I didn't know how to categorize like my comments, so it was kind of like a either-or, so, like, my bad. But I ain't know it's five minutes, see, this all, I'll go ahead and start. This little extra time as we're kind of going is that, I just want to thank not only you all, LeKendra Middlebrook. This was, this office was made out of a call from like four years ago, because we lost so many people, right? So I want to emphasize the progress that has been made, not only from the city, but the people in this room, Renounce Denounce, Turn Up Knox, The Credible Messenger, that kind of made this work, so I'll kind of acknowledge that. I also know NICJR, we call him Nick Jr., but NICJR is a national partner that also works with me at Cities United, that's my, that's my job. So they've been around for a while, they've been good around data collection, cost of violence, and training, which is desperately kind of needed. So what I want to talk about really in terms of that, with their expertise, how powerful they are, is true collaboration between them, the city, and the people already doing the work. So I saw the model, and I had Kealan, I talked to him yesterday, and I heard his words. I think he will be good around true commitment to violence interrupters here, and I believe that. I think collaboration will achieve a couple of things. A lot of the anger is based off of decades of disinvestment, failed relationships, even before disbiding anybody else, so there is a pain that's been happening for a long time. So sometimes that manifests in a different way, right? So funding, gatekeeping, all those kind of things, and it manifests in that way. So this is why people, a lot of times, are frustrated and angry, right? They've lost people, and there's a call made, and then at times they feel kind of left out, right? So this is all about organizational health of these organizations that already exist, because the organizational health translates to the health of our communities, and it keeps our kids safe. So it's about organizational help at the end of the day. NICJR can enhance that through training, through hiring people. Again, I suggest hiring people that's already doing the work. And at the end, after this year is done, what it can look like should be also collaboration between city folk and community folk. So not just collaboration between NICJR and community organizations, it's also collaboration when it comes to community input in terms of decision-making, implementation, governance, and then lastly, accountability. These groups have to be sustained to where they can be autonomous, where you wouldn't need a national partner, right? That's where we want to get to, right? We want to need a national partner, because they've been trained fully with universal methods, because CVI is a new kind of method, but these trainings work, but it has to be uni- universal type of skills and training. And then kind of lastly, as I got these time left, is also outside of this project, outside of this initiative, is provide mental health for the protectors. How do you heal the healers? Because when you're on the street facing life and literal death, it takes a toll on your mental, it takes a toll on your soul, right? So as they go into crisis response, case management, and violence interrupters, how do you interrupt the violence that they're dealing with internally, right? So maybe it's Nick Jr., maybe it's you all, but I think collaboration about how to fully invest in them, whether it be training, whether it be funding, and lastly, how can they maintain their mental, right? Because at the end of the day, we want all these groups to be truly autonomous and truly ready for more money outside of city funding. And kind of lastly, with violence reduction, it is not how you stop the bleeding today, it is also systemic. How do you address affordable housing? How do you address homelessness? How do you address education? How do you address all the social determinants of health? So when this is all said and done, I'm fairly for the proposal, by the way, I want to say that, I'm for the proposal. But outside of that, we have to also look at the institutions, the systems that are also play, because systems are also, in a sense, kind of violent, right? So we have to address those systems. And then kind of lastly, what sustainability is, is not with the CVI groups, but it's also saying that everybody in the CVI ecosystem, whether it be CVI groups, community partners, preachers, young people, it makes their work. So, thank you.
Thank you. And the last person to speak on this in opposition, Rashad Woods. Mr. Woods?
Rashad Woods, 37917. My name is Rashad Woods. I'm the Tennessee Director of Renounce Denounce Gang Intervention Program. We're one of those, one of the organizations that don't get a lot of funding from the city and other sources. I mean, we've been in, we've been in Knoxville since August of 2023. A lot of the network and everything that we've created, we've had to struggle and fight for those networks. So while I'm reading this, I just want everybody to keep that in mind. As I've taken the time to review this resolution and reflect on its implications, I've gained a clearer understanding of what is truly going on behind the scenes. There's a lot of talk about an organization from California with six people and the city of Knoxville's willingness to spend a half million dollars on it. But the reality is that that's not the core issue here. What's really driving this initiative is the intervention, is the intervention plan from NICJR, a plan that the city is eager to support financially. This raises an important question for us. Do we want our organization to be a part of this effort as employees? After careful consideration, my answer is no. The organization has its, each organization has its own vision and how to reduce violence and create safer communities. While this plan may share some similarities with our approach, it also contains elements that we simply do not practice or care to participate in. There are also aspects within our current strategies that would be neglected if we were to participate in this initiative. However, I want to highlight that RDGIP occupies a unique space that is essential for violence reduction. Our approach, our strategies, and our community-based work are vital components of the broader effort to create safer communities. We are committed to a model that respects the needs and voices of our community, and that approach has proven effective. Therefore, I believe that it is, that it is in our best interest to gracefully step back from any discussions involving this resolution. We have a clear mission and a vision, one that guides our work and our values. It's essential that we stay true to our mission, even if our paths diverge from others in this field. That said, I want to emphasize that this work will mostly, most definitely intersect at points. When it does, know that we will be present and engaged, because at the end of the day, even if our approaches differ, our ultimate goal remains the same, to create safer and healthier communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, that concludes people who signed up to speak on this item. I just want to start by thanking Councilmember McKenzie for leading the public meeting last night about this agenda item. I appreciate everyone who was able to attend that, including, you know, our staff, LeKendra Middlebrook and Starr Starks. I also want to thank Kealan Henderson from NICJR who presented last night. He could not be here tonight due to a death in the family, had to travel back home. I also just want to say that approving this item will help us get street outreach workers back on our streets to continue this critical work of violence interruption. I also want to remind everybody, I think people know, that the bulk of this money will go to be hiring local people here in Knoxville who know Knoxville and know this work. Also, just another thing that wanted to reiterate that I think was mentioned last night and two weeks ago, that this is designed to be a temporary solution. We believe in this work, and we believe that NICJR can be a bridge while local entities build capacity for the management and executive leadership experience to lead this work after this interim period. So I hope after these extra two weeks and meetings and time to ask more questions and get more answers, that counsel will support this contract extension. Any further questions or discussion? Counselmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me start by saying thank you to everyone who attended the meeting yesterday. I want to thank Councilmembers Singh, Parker, and Thomas for making the time to be there as well. It was good to hear the voices in the room, it was good to see the people who are doing the work, whether it is boots on the ground and they're in the streets touching these young people, whether they were represented organizations that provide resources or aftercare or therapy for families and young people. And what I'll say is that this has been, today has been quite a roller coaster as it relates to this topic. I know that there were discussions and collaborations that have taken place within the last two weeks, and I appreciate those efforts and was very hopeful as it relates to those things. However, that just does not seem to be the case, that they were, collaborations will be able to move forward on a local basis at this particular time for various reasons. While I may disagree with that, I must respect it, and must respect the space that people stand in and they're working and they exist in. I'm hopeful that at some point, organizations can find a middle ground, because at the end of the day, we all share, and all of you especially who are doing the work, share a common goal, and that is to intervene, interrupt violence, and help keep our community safe and to save lives, period. And that's what you all have been committed to, doing that work, whether you got money from the city or you got money from no one, you all have been committed to that work. What I see in this, in this contract, and let me also say that anyone that, my phone's been blowing up all day, if you text me within the last 45 minutes, I've not, or hour, I've not looked at my phone because it's just too distracting and it's just too much of this roller coaster today. Because unfortunately, we have a common and shared goal, but we have differences of opinion on how we get there and how we're able to build capacity. Each organization that's doing the work in the field, in the streets, all have relationships with NICJR and has had training with them. So that, that is a common middle ground that is very prevalent. I think each of these organizations have stated that some good has come out of those relationships with NICJR. And what I will say is that I am going to stay encouraged and prayerful that our local organizations can come back together in that middle ground, be collaborative, and have partnerships. And I'm hopeful that each organization will come back to the table by way of this contract to be able to say, how can we work together? How can we contribute? How can we be that bridge back to the organizations that we're already working with, even if it is just for one year? The capacity building and the good that can come out of it, to be able to touch more lives and save more lives, at the end of the day, to me, is worth it. And so with that said, again, it's also shown me today is that we have some healing that we have to do amongst ourselves as well. So again, to each person that's here today, each, you know, each person in the community that has contributed to the paradigm shift in interrupting and preventing violence, because if you're in the community and you're touching a young person, or you're touching a mother or a family member that's experienced trauma and violence, or is having issues with their, with their children, you're helping to make that difference. I've said it a million times, there is not one individual organization or one individual person who can say that because of their efforts alone, that has made the difference and has caused the decrease that we've seen in violent crime. That is simply not true. It has been a collective and collaborative effort of everyone. And so for that, and I know, and our faith community praying for our young people, praying for the people who are risking their lives that are out here touching these young people, because I don't want us to forget that though they may be young and they may be children, folks are still putting their lives on the line to go out and outreach when they're dealing with gangs, gangs and trying to get young people out of gangs. And so with that said, I respect the decisions that have been made, but I'm also going to not stop praying and encouraging you all and working with you all to come back together collaboratively, because you all had me way up here, now I'm kind of back down. But I'm encouraged today, and because of that, I will, I will be voting to support this contract, because again, we have to do something, and if this is, this is the something, then we're going to work it and we're going to, and again, if you choose not to come to the table, that's a personal decision that you, that you make, but we have to do something, and we'll continue to see how this works and move forward, and hopefully we'll be moving forward together. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselmember Parker?
I appreciated the opportunity to come together last night to hear from NICJR and give them an opportunity to explain what they would do under this contract and with this funding. And I walked away with the, with the, with the same concerns that many in that room had. And those concerns are, what was to be planned over the next 12 months, and how we would not be in the exact same place we're in right now, 12 months from now? And that answer was, that question was not answered. One suggestion that was raised by Ms. Middlebrook was that in addition to this contract, the Office on Community Safety and Empowerment would continue to play a role in helping with those capacity-building efforts. But this does not give me confidence, because when we started this investing in violence reduction work a couple of years ago, and the idea of forming Turn Up Knox was brought before city council, I had concerns then, because the supports that were mentioned during that time didn't include anything in regards to nonprofit management. And, and we had folks coming in to oversee this work and carry out this work, and that wasn't their background. And there was a full acknowledgement, I feel at the time, from the city, that, that they knew they didn't have this background, and that they were going to essentially have their back as they built up and developed this program. Now, and this is what I warned my, my dear community members of, now that the city has a, still unexplained reasoning for wanting to switch from the Turn Up Knox contract to this one, the blame is being put all on Turn Up Knox. They didn't produce the reports, there's management issues. produce the reports, there's management issues, all, you know, that, that popped up all of a sudden, a month after we approved the third, third contract, I believe. So, as a council, we are not getting clear updates, explanations for who's really dropping the ball. And from what I see is if the agreement that City Council approved initially, that put the Office of Community Safety Empowerment in a position to only allocate funding once they receive reports, rather than giving lump sum amounts to the group, we wouldn't be in this place. So, why was the original agreement not followed? We had a system in place where we had oversight. We had a group of community members we knew didn't have the capacity, but we made a commitment to them. Now, we're throwing them under the bus. So, how are we doing something different when the responsibility for capacity building is either, we've either left it just to these groups to figure it out on their own, we're not giving them significant funding to address that capacity? We want them to figure it out while we give five hundred thousand to somebody else, and then hopefully, they'll come back to the table in twelve months. Or, we're relying, once again, on the Office of Community Safety and Empowerment to do that without telling us what the new plan is, when we had a plan before that, that wasn't followed, that should have provided the proper oversight. So, I'm very frustrated that, first of all, we're not having a real conversation about what's been, been going on and where, where we are lacking so that we can address it. In my opinion, based on what we heard last night, this contract is insufficient to address the issues that we need addressing. There's a portion of the contract that addresses capacity building towards the end of the contract. That is not what groups in our community need. If we haven't been able to provide that support over the last two years, how are we going to do it in the last couple of months of this contract, or expect them to do it on their own?
Thank you. Councilmember Singh?
Thank you, Councilmember Parker. You said a lot of the things that I was thinking. My concern is that three years ago, the Office of Community Safety kind of threw something up against the wall. At the time, the Turn Up contract was being talked about initially, I wasn't in support of it, because it was choosing one group of people over community. As time went by, I wanted to put all of the resources and support into that. But at some point, once again, I don't know how it broke down. Everything was fine until it wasn't. As far as what I knew, Nick Jr. was supposed to be helping Turn Up Knox with technical assistance and reporting to the Office of Community Safety, that that's one of the things that they were paid to do, which they did not do. So, I don't understand why we would be giving them more money to do something that they weren't already able to do. It also feels like now, we, we tried to throw that concept up against the wall to see if it would stick. It didn't. And now, we're just throwing something up against the wall again to see if it would stick. I think by approving this contract, I do think the community needs a lot of healing, but I think that this contract does the opposite of that. As far as hoping everybody gets back down, gets to sit at the table, from what I heard last night, it didn't sound like anybody who has been at this table doing the work is invited back again. I think there were specific questions about would the people who've been doing the work be asked to come and do, to work with them? And I believe they said no. So, that's sort of like going into a community, saying, okay, who are the experts that have been doing this work? All right, those are the ones we're not going to hire. So, I would like to have this postponed to figure this out. I think it's very damaging to the, the community to just kind of take it out of the hands of the people doing this work and saying, you guys can't figure this out. We're going to send the money elsewhere and let somebody else come into our community and make these decisions, because we're not capable of it, or the Office of Community Safety is not capable of it. So, I would like to see this at least postponed.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, Councilperson Singh and Councilperson Parker said a lot of the things that I wanted to say. I would also have a question, if Mr. Rashad Wood of Announce/Renounce, if he would come to the podium to answer a question. Yes, you're, of course, affiliated with Announce or Renounce?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Renounce, denounce.
Renounce, denounce. Thank you. And I think you're an affiliate of a group out of Cleveland, is that right?
Yes, it's an eleven-year-old group out of Cleveland, Ohio. They started in Cleveland, Ohio. We moved to Lorraine, Ohio. Been about, they're about the same amount of time, ten years. Then, we've been in Knoxville since August of 2023.
Okay. And then, I understand that your group and your Cleveland affiliate does training for violence intervention, is that right?
Yes. So, well, the training that NICJR offers, it's, as Andre said, it's, it's, it's core, it's, it's the core training for violence interruption. You know, the CBT training, we're one of the only organizations in the United States with an actual CBT program built into our organization. But like I say, that, that's kind of like the model, that's, that's the model everybody's following right now. And yes, we do train.
Right. But you use the same model, and you've instituted that model in Knoxville, is that right?
Um, yes.
And you have trained staff here in Knoxville with your organization?
Yes, the youth violence interrupt, I'm able to train interrupters and set up sites in the state of Tennessee.
Okay. And then, you've trained people with Turn Up Knox?
Um, no, actually, I was one of the, in it, I was one of the first people in Turn Up Knox. I left Turn Up Knox about two months before August of 2023.
Okay. Would your group be amenable to training people in Turn Up Knox if they took on new people onboard?
Yes, sir. All it would take is for me to make a phone call. If it was that hospital, hospital intervention training, I'd just have to make a phone call, because we don't actually, like, here in Knoxville, we don't actually do that. There's some aspects of the program that they do in Cleveland that we don't do, and that's because of the capacity issue. They get millions of funding and we hardly get, you know, we get a whole lot less.
Yeah. Your Cleveland affiliates using the same model as NICJR, is that right?
I mean, not the exact same model, but it's the, it's, it's, it's a similar model as all of the larger organizations. You have Cities United, you have NICJR, you have Cure Violence. All of those organizations pretty much use the, the, the Life Coach, CBT, that, that type of model. They, they, they go out into the community and then they do the life coaching, where we, we call it aftercare. There's people that's been in our aftercare portion of our program since we've been in Knoxville. Not saying that they needed the aftercare portion that long, but for instance, there's a young, a young lady, if you remember, the, the, the youth, a fourteen-year-old girl that was shot in Lonsdale.
Right.
She was in the car with some of the other gentlemen. So, that young girl came to us at sixteen years old, affiliated, she was shot. She was shot and she was affiliated with a gang. That's why she was shot in Lonsdale. So, when we made contact with her, she came in as part of our curriculum-based cognitive thinking program. We took her into that program and we worked with her for ten weeks. A lot of time, that's, that we're working with that mind state. That's what that cognitive part is. We're not telling them what not to do. We're kind of trying to influence them on making better decisions and choices. So, we got her through that ten weeks and formed that relationship with her. After that ten weeks, during that aftercare portion, we use, we have connections with our partnerships with C, KLF, and those workforce development programs. So, we see through her, through her intake, we see which one she kind of fits best in. She didn't have a GED. And also, we found out that she was sixteen, you know, living in a home with kind of like no adult in it. It was a older male, seventeen-year-old guy, you know, her boyfriend. The mother lived in the home, but she's not in the home, so there's no real adult supervision. So, we had to kind of take charge. Okay, so you need a GED, you need some job skills. So, we took her, took her to KLF, got her enrolled in KLF, and you know, we walk them through these processes. What we call it is, 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 uh, I forgot the name of it, because I'm a nurse.
We're, we're about.
But we walk her through these processes. So, we get her to KLF. With, while she was at KLF, you know, we made sure that she gets there every day. We made contact with her three times a week, which is the same thing that most groups do. Either it's a, you know, we do the in-face visit three times a week, make sure she gets back and forth to KLF, get her to KLF. So, while there, she got her culinary arts. We pay for her, we pay for.
Mr. Woods, you're, we are about out of time on this one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't go far away, though, because I may have another question for you after my colleagues speak. Thank you.
Anyway, right now, she's a nurse and she's doing great in life. That's the end result.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas and Mr. Woods. Councilmember McKenzie, did you have your light on? Okay. I think, was it Councilmember Singh or Councilmember Parker? I'm not sure who was after that.
Okay. I'll go ahead and go first. Sorry, I wasn't expecting that. I have a few questions for Mr. Grant, if you don't mind. Would you mind coming up? What I want to talk about is how the groups that are doing similar work were not collaborating, and what has changed about that collaboration? Do you think you guys, moving forward? Because at the last meeting, there were people talking to each other that had not been, I mean, they'd just been beefing on Facebook before that, right? So, it felt like there was some significance, significant changes. What do you feel about sitting together at the same table?
I think it's necessary. I think there's a false narrative that been put out, that individuals like myself, Rashad Woods, Lawrence Williams, Andre Canty, that we haven't sat down at the table and come to a conclusion to move forward. You know, obviously, there was an overview that was put out today that was made public. In that statement, at the end of that statement, it was, it was said that Turn Up Knox is looking to have another contract with, with the city. Well, I can understand the misconception of that statement. That overview is months old. That overview was sent out to each of you on 4/16. And so, when we made that statement as an organization, it was prior to myself and Rashad Woods getting together and realizing the importance of collaboration. Instead of fighting each other, how about we put forth a collective effort and present it in front of the city so we can move forward and build capacity together to be able to continue to do this work?
Do you think you have space under that tent for other organizations as well?
Absolutely, absolutely. Rashad can speak to this. The work is so vague. There's, there's so much needed when dealing with violence in our community. Something as simple as housing, right? While we not, not directly provide housing, you have, well, you had resources like CAC, you had the safe haven that we could send a young man to temporarily, you know, the Y. I mean, there's, there's a plethora of organizations that we've worked with that was able to intensify the work that we did. And so, yeah, I think us making that statement today, I just had a conversation with Rashad in the back. I did. I called him to the back. I said, what's going on? Last night, we had an understanding to move forward with this. Between last night and today, there's been conversations going on behind the scenes, and this has been done strategically. You made a statement. NICJR has been in place since July 2023. They worked with us all the way up until February 2025. If the narrative is Turn Up Knox failed, we failed with the assistance, with the assistance of NICJR.
Right.
So, why are we then trusting NICJR to come again and build capacity for twelve months? It doesn't make sense. This is personal. And if I gotta, if I gotta walk away from Turn Up Knox for it to happen, that's what I'm willing to do. This is personal. It's nothing else.
I'd like to ask you a tough question. You don't have to answer it right away. I believe the city said that if you, Lydia Brown, and Rick Held, who's on the board, who's my partner, were to step down, only then would they reconsider a contract with Turn Up Knox. Would you be willing to step down just to help Turn Up Knox exist because the work was being done?
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I made that assumption then. I offered that then, myself. At the time, they didn't want to keep Lydia Brown onboard. I sacrificed, I asked them, well, can I just walk away and keep Lydia Brown? That wasn't an option. And so, my board stood with me. They stood with us because they believed in the work. They were able to see the leadership from behind the scenes. I treasured, I mean, let's, let's just.
What I'm trying to do is not throw the baby out with the bathwater, right? We had an organization that was effective and it was working, and then problems came up. If, but these people stepping down can fix this, we don't have to start at zero again.
No, no. I have individuals in our organization that is willing to step up. We have previous staff that still have the capacity to be able to do the work as well. We have other organizations that's doing the work as well. A lot of them can't be named. It's just so much. And so, if they, if it takes me walking away, that's what I'll do. But it's personal. That's exactly what this is. It's personal, nothing less.
But you'd walk away to save the organization and, and have it not be about you then, but the work?
I walk away to save the work.
That you've done such a good job with.
To save the work. It's not just about Turn Up Knox.
Thank you.
To save the work. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't get to be disgruntled two weeks ago, so I'm gonna wallow a little bit. This is sad for a bunch of reasons, but, you know, I'm hope, I think everybody in this room wants to continue to do the work that everybody's been doing. I want to continue to support whatever works. A bit of a pain point for me is just the sadness of, we sat in here a couple of years ago in the midst of just awful trauma. And Mr. Grant, can you come back up just for a second? There were a lot of folks in the room who said, don't, don't trust Turn Up Knox, don't give it to them. And so, the sad irony of now, this same kind of thing being flipped is, is, is just sad. But, but, but we all took a chance on this organization, this structure, this office, all working together, and we have measurable progress. No one can deny the numbers that everybody here celebrates. So, as a community, we have made progress. I appreciate Mr. Conti's comments. Mr. Woods, I've never met you, but your willingness to just say, I'll keep showing up no matter what, is, is, is first class. And the work that you've done, Denzel, is, is, is measurable and out there, and forever will be, Knoxville will be better as a result of that. With that said, Councilwoman Singh just asked a hard question. I want to double down on the hard question. This question was posed to you and your board months ago.
Yep.
And you just answered different now. And by the way, you have a board, and they are good people and smart people. And the fact that this has gotten sideways is not just on you and the field work, it's on everybody involved in this relationship. And so, we just get to come here and be cranky about it because we weren't involved. But I don't want to lose something that our community needs. With that said, back to my original question, this was presented to you to step down, for whatever reason, and the board, wholeheartedly, I got the letters from y'all and your messages and our conversations, that you weren't going to do that. Has something changed?
In terms of the support, asking, you know, given that our leadership was so heavily invested in the work early on, we had to do a lot on our own. We literally built this organization from the ground up on our own. And to ask for the, the, the two individuals that is leading this organization, to ask those two individuals to just stop working immediately after we build the capacity. I mean, we spent ninety days.
If I were you, I'd have said no to. I'm just asking. You just answered questionably, differently than, than was posed three or four months ago. And I, one more related question is, Mr. Woods, and, and y'all seem to be doing parallel work. If, if everybody can come together, work together now, what's, have y'all been, you know, why not work together? Yeah, come on if you want, make it a party, it's fine. Why, why, why all the different work up until now, and now, when there's a new person involved or new group involved, there's, I, because I don't know a lot of the background between the conversations here.
It was never about personal feelings or anything like that. When you're dealing with an organization, I'm the Tennessee Director of this organization.
Yeah.
So, anything that happens with this, it's, it's on me. When we're doing those events, at first, they were coming out of my pocket. When we're doing, when I'm taking those, like, having those, those, those classes with the kids, that's coming out of pocket. When I'm talking to these individuals, going and transporting these eighteen to twenty-six years, it's coming out of pocket.
I get it.
So, it's, it's stressful. It's stressful, because you, 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 you give one organization all the money, and it causes, it, it, not saying that you should finance every organization in Knoxville, that would be crazy, but you should support them. With no support, it causes. With no support, it causes, it, it causes you to be disgruntled. Imagine if everybody up here didn't get paid except for two people. How would you feel if they made you come in? I mean, not make you come in, but if you felt like you, you needed to be here every day. This is what you're, 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 this is what you, where, where your heart is.
I appreciate you sharing that.
Yes, but only one person gets paid for it.
I, I get it. I get it. Thank you for sharing that. I appreciate that.
I want to, I want to follow up while I got you up here, Rashad, because we spent hours at UT Hospital last night.
Yeah.
Um, we were there till about 1:00. We had two participants who was in a, in a car crash on that we both served. And just being in that moment, it was a full circle moment that, you know, we, we wasn't sure if we was going to share or not. But I, I, I just, I found it that it was real ironic for us to have that meeting last night and then for that to happen last night. And for us to find ourselves in a position where the work brought us together. And, and passing this is gonna, is, is, is going to create more division in our community.
Yeah, you're just getting six other people to be in the same position that Turnup Knox was with the community.
Uh, thank you so much, Vice Mayor.
A few more questions, but.
Uh, some other of your colleagues have a light on. Just as a point of information, Renounced Denounce has received over $50,000 in funding from the city through the Office of Community Safety Empowerment Grants, just as a point of information. Councilmember Ryder?
Um, I guess, Mr. Woods and Mr. Grant, y'all come on back up. I don't know why you keep, y'all need to pick a front row seat, okay? Because I bet I'm not the last one to call you. I had a question that I was going to ask, but, uh, I don't know. We're all over the place here. Um, I was going to ask a question of Ms. Middlebrook, but I'll get to that maybe on my next turn. Y'all were on a, a roll there, so I'd like to go with it. I'm going to tell you, I'm confused, but I want to ask you to elaborate. And, and if it's not appropriate in public, then y'all say, uh, Lauren, I'll tell you tomorrow. Um, when you both just said, um, I just, I'm trying to understand because there's a room full of people here that care about their community, right? So when you both say that you, um, crossed paths last night because you were serving the same person, help me understand your work, okay? What were you doing for the person? What were you doing for the person? And what's appropriate to discuss? I, because I do understand that you guys do things that might not be appropriate for public meetings.
No, no, they were both individuals who are participants in the program.
Okay.
We have, uh, youth individuals that are participants in our program, but we also have adults that are those proof, tho, 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 um, the highest risk individuals. So there was a car wreck, yes, last night with three individuals in a car. One individual was involved with our program. One individual was involved in their program. So I got a community, because we don't really get the alerts. Um, we don't, we don't, we don't have that. So a, a community member actually sent me the photos of the individual. So as I'm pulling up the photos, looking to see who it is, I saw his face. Before I, I mean, when I saw his face, an individual from Turnup Knox employee called me and said, hey, you know, so these two guys just got into a car wreck. You know, instantly, I'm like, hey, I just saw the pictures.
It's not one person, it's multiples. Okay.
Yes, but I'm on my way up there. Um, so we get there, you know, I talked to the family. Like I say, we have, when you talk about the funding, yes, we did get $50,000, but I have a, I have a staff of eight individuals. Um, a lot of times, I'm playing a lot of the pieces. I'm playing the director. I'm playing the program manager. I got help with Wando playing part, like, there's a full organization being ran here in Knoxville. So it, it's, 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 it's hard to function, you know? Um, so I'm, I, as the director, I got to take time away from my family and, and I shot to the, to the hospital because I got to make contact with this individual and this, and this family. Because for one, I got to kind of try to find out if he's okay. And for two, like, what are the circumstances to that wreck? Uh, so, um, that's, that's kind of how we bumped heads. When I, when I talked to one of the, one of his employees, he was like, hey, Denzel's on his way up there. So I was like, okay, I'll call him. You know, we kind of collaborated on that, but that, that did happen last night.
And to answer your question, Councilmember Ryder, I know for us, um, I'm going to use the name Jay Money because that's what we call him. We call him Jay Money. But he's, he's one of our program participants. Um, we've been providing life coaching for him, um, taking him to go see probation, making sure he gets to his doctor's appointments. He does have a, a physical disability. He also has a speech impediment. And so, our life coaching, being with him, you know, on a daily basis has definitely, uh, not only been impactful for him, uh, but it's been, and been impactful for the staff who be, get to do that. And so, literally, you had two individuals that we work with, they just so happened to be in the same car. Um, and it, and it brought us to UT Hospital yesterday.
And the one individual for us, we were dealing with him because he was recently released from prison and we were doing the same thing, kind of the life coaching thing with him and walking him through these processes, trying to reduce him back into society. And that just happened.
Okay, all right. Um, I'm going to go ahead, since I have a little bit of time left, I'm going to ask Ms. Middlebrook my question. And, um, I was not able to be at last night's meeting. Um, and, um, unfortunately, I regret that, but, um, so one of the comments made here was that if NICJR had the funding and they're going to hire five violence interrupters, that it would not be anybody who'd already done the work. Nobody would be called back to the table. So I guess I need to understand, like, what was said about that last night at the meeting.
That was not my understanding or interpretation of what was said last night. What I heard NICJR say on multiple occasions is that the, um, uh, positions will be posted and anyone who is interested in those positions can apply for those positions.
It's also true that they said that they would be happy to have an information session so they can explain what the jobs are, uh, so anybody can attend those and then decide whether or not they wish to apply.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Councilmember Thomas, I guess?
Yes. Um, Mr. Woods, just one clarifying question. Uh, I think I understand it. You, there's a core training method and is that called CTV?
No.
Cognitive Behavioral Therapy.
Yeah, Cognitive Behavioral Therapy.
Okay, I'm not good on acronyms sometimes. But that's the core training method.
Oh, no, the Cognitive Behavioral Therapy, that's, that's our, um, that's the meat of our organization. Everybody that goes through our program goes through that, see, our, our curriculum-based cognitive thinking program. Um, it's a 10-week program where we kind, like I say, we, 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 we work with the way that they think.
Okay, now, do different organizations use that particular program? Is what I'm getting at?
Um, there's only a few program, there's only a few organizations in the United States that has a curriculum-based one.
Okay.
Um, and we try to keep everything uniform. So me, I'm not saying something different than what Wando is saying when we interact with these individuals.
I understand. Do you know if that's what NICJR uses?
Um, I'm not for sure if there's, is a curriculum-based. I think that they have the, um, the thing that's different about ours and theirs is they have those, um, alerts, the, um, I can't remember what they're called, but they're the actual alerts where they get around with everybody in the community. Custom alerts.
So I guess different organizations use different types of programs. Uh, a lot of them are pretty much based on the cognitive training program. Uh, okay, I think.
Yes, yes, sir.
I think I got it. So when I was seeing you use the same program as NICJR, it might be similar, but it would be, it may be based on the cognitive training program, but it wouldn't, you wouldn't be borrowing from them or they wouldn't be borrowing from you, right?
Um, actually, when they were talking about people that, that would actually, if the people from our organization could work for NICJR on those positions, that's why I had to decline because, no, we cannot, because we have a curriculum-based cognitive thinking program. Um, for us to be a part, and plus, the work is too close. To work with NICJR, I would have to stop being the Director of Renounced Denounce, which would leave a gap in Knoxville because of the work that we do. They only, like, from, that, they work with adults, proven risk adults, um, tho, those highest-risk adults. That would leave out those 16 to 11-year-olds that we have to, we have, we are the only program right now that are getting referrals from juvenile. I have to go to juvenile Thursday because one of the kids got caught with a gun in school. Those are high-risk individuals too. And those are, to stop those adults is just putting a Band-Aid on the problem. Um, dealing with the kids is making sure that that problem doesn't exist.
Okay, that's the only question I have right now. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague and, don't go away.
Okay.
Councilmember Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I heard a lot of discussion from, um, folks in the community who really care about making sure we don't have a return to violence that, that we experienced recently. And, um, I think everyone agrees that we don't want to, to see that happen. And I think what I'm also hearing is that we all want local groups to be at a, a capacity level where they can continue the work that they're doing and that we want to make sure that the city is able to help with funding to make sure that is successful, uh, going forward. Director Middlebrook, what I was going to ask you is, is there a commitment that we're, you know, considering here from, uh, Nick Jr., um, that they're going to provide training and technical assistance to groups that are, that are already doing this work in the community? And to help build us to a point where we do have, you know, autonomous groups that, you know, can, can operate in this, in this area and be funded with, with city dollars and, um, be even more successful than they've, than they've been able to be?
Yes, sir. That is, sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead. Can you explain a little bit more about that?
Uh, I was just going to say, that is, um, a commitment that, um, NICJR has made in addition to the training and technical assistance, um, that they provide to us, um, already through our existing contract, uh, and the additional training and technical assistance that would be provided, um, through, uh, this CBI expansion. Uh, also included in that is training and technical assistance for, uh, partner agencies and/or individuals who, um, have an interest in learning CBI work and, um, organizational, uh, management of CBI work because it is very specific work. Uh, and so that is absolutely a part of the agreement, uh, that has been presented and proposed.
Thank you. Um, you know, and I just want to thank all the groups that are doing the work and have been doing the work. And even if you haven't been getting funding, I think that's an important piece about this training and making sure that we can be successful. As one of the speakers said, I don't know how fragile the progress we've made is. I don't think any of us do. And what I don't like is that we're here today with this debate going on and not having the city putting significant funds behind having violence interruption, um, uh, and, and prevention in, in the city. Because we're going a period of time without those funds out there. And I don't like how we got there. And I don't think any of us understand how we got there. And I think we want to know how we got there. And I understand the frustration because I feel it too. We need to know how this happened and where, where we ended up. But I don't know how fragile that is. And the summer is coming. And we need to have folks out with the funding that we can do from the city to help with this process. So I'm going to, I'm going to support this, um, just as I said I was going to support it last week because I don't know how fragile that is. And we heard from folks who've experienced this violence in their family and they've lost folks. And I don't want to not fund this and have to explain why we didn't do it. But I do want to see a commitment that we're going to train local groups. We're going to provide help to local groups so that we can get to, and we need to have that be the ultimate goal, that we get to a place where the local groups are being able to respond and are being adequately funded to make, make sure this work continues in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of things that I wanted to bring up that I found concerning from last night's meeting. Um, one is the confusing approach. So when I talked to NICJR about the meetings that have been happening or the conversations that have been taking place at the Mayor's Roundtable on the custom notifications and talked to them about how similar that program is with their, uh, credible messenger program. And my concerns about confusion in the community, about when somebody knocks on the door, are they, um, coming from a community group that has relationships in the community? Are they coming from KPD? Where did the data come from? So that's one thing I talked to NICJR about, is where does the data come from? And I clarified, um, that they also do not agree that the data should come from KPD. They agree that this data should come from, uh, informed community members who are, um, who are, who are, um, who definitely have access to, you know, some information about, uh, cr- crime statistics in the community and all of those things. But if you're talking about the individuals who are at imminent risk of being involved in a violent incident or being the victim of a violent incident, how do we explain to that person when we knock on the door, how we put them in that list? Where did the data come from? And when I talked to the NICJR about it, uh, you know, he emphasized that in order for this work to, to be successful and in order for their credible messengers to be successful, they cannot have the appearance of having, um, uh, this dat, this information exchange happening between their community leaders and police officers. And we concluded at the end of our conversation that there's just too much confusion in Knoxville. And really, what we need to do in this moment is to have a public conversation, a coming together, to clarify what the city's strategy is. That was an agreement that we had. Another concern I had was how NICJR would be able to provide even better oversight and reporting, uh, remotely. Because as I'm talking to their representative last night about these meetings I've been attending and the people that I've been talking to and the concerns that I have, they're not in these meetings. They're not, uh, they don't know all of the people that I'm talking about. Um, they know a very specific group of people who've participated in their trainings, but they don't know Knoxville or our community. So I'm just, I don't know how they'll be able to better, uh, provide oversight remotely than if we kept this, uh, within the city. Um, so I, you know, I, I cannot support this contract. Um, I believe that NICJR has provided some valuable training and support, uh, to organizations in our community, but I don't believe that this is, um, what we need. Uh, I don't believe this expansion of a contract is what we need moving into the summer. Um, and I really, um, I find the conversations unfortunate still uh, around this idea that we have to approve this contract in order to have something in place because we've had community group after community group, uh, both tonight and, and at other times tell us, because of my personal experience, because of how this has impacted me personally, I continue to show up, even when I'm not getting funding. But if you want me to expand my capacity so that we can do more, I need the city's support. So they're going to keep showing up. They're going to keep doing the work, not at the capacity that we need them to. And so 12 months from now, after giving 517,000 or however much it is to the NICJR, um, they're going to continue to be in that same place because as, as some of them have told you, that's the place they've been in since 2009, when they did this work, or 2010. And when we, uh, pass the contract for Turnup Knox, we acknowledge that these types of programs struggle to find funding outside of the government.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Parker. Uh, just a point of clarification, the onsite, the management by NICJR will by set be someone here in, on the ground in Knoxville. Also, I just think it's an important information to know that when you speak to cities and around the country, very few, if any, are funding them through local dollars like we are. So I'm really proud of that commitment. A lot of other cities are scrambling because they've been relying on federal dollars for violence interruption. We've been using our own city dollars because it's a priority. And so, whatever happens in Washington, uh, And so whatever happens in Washington, you know, we hope to be able to continue this. And supporting this contract tonight will make it happen sooner.
Mayor, please.
Yes?
Since you responded to what I said, would you allow me to respond to your response?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Just to clarify, there are six positions in the contract. It was my understanding that one of those positions will be based in Oakland.
Ms. Middlebrook, could you clarify that for council? Maybe use Chief Noels. No, no, use the microphone. Use the microphone that Chief Noels.
I don't know if it's too many.
Turn off your microphones, there's just too many on. I'll get back to you.
There we go.
Vice Mayor Smith and Councilmember Helsley, it's just too many.
So all six positions will be local positions. Five of the positions will be interrupters and/or life coaches, outreach workers, some combination of that. And the sixth position is the program manager position, which is handling administrative processes, kind of oversight, reporting, scheduling, training, supporting the trainings, et cetera. The program manager, the project manager that we currently have, Mr. Henderson, who was here yesterday, will also be more frequently visiting Knoxville, boots on the ground, to support both technical assistance and training for the city, for the CBI staff, and for partner organizations. But the program manager will be locally housed in Knoxville.
And so why do we need this? I don't understand that position then. Because that person then has to be trained, brought up, and apparently we don't have that capacity in Knoxville. So they're going to find a program manager who's going to provide that oversight, give them the training, bring them up to where they need to be to run this program in the next month?
We have tried using a local entity and found that the more capacity building was needed. So this year gives us the opportunity to use NICJR's national expertise and management to hire local people to do it, have an onsite manager to oversee it, which is no small task. Managing an organization doing this highly complicated collaborative work is challenging work. And in that year, NICJR will help empower and build the capacity of local organizations. So at the conclusion of the contract, we hope that we can do an RFP and have local organizations be equipped to respond to that RFP and provide the service without needing NICJR's help anymore. Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to be clear that NICJR, when they're talking about hiring these positions, they're going to be looking at people who are already doing the work in the community. And so with Mr. Woods saying that he does not, he would not be in a position to apply for any of those positions and be a bridge back. Can you come back to the podium, Rashad? Are there people within your organization now that could potentially apply for these positions and be a bridge back?
Push the mic on. There's a button to the right there.
If they apply for the position and they belong to any organization that is closely related, if they apply for that position and they are part of any other violence intervention program, they would have to choose either or because it's a conflict of interest. You can't get paid from both. The work is too closely related.
So it can't coexist together?
Yes, you can coexist together as far as partnering. You could volunteer for one and maybe work for another, but that's probably not even going to, it's not going to be acceptable because it would be a conflict of interest within the organizations. The data that you collect, who would the data go to? It's a lot of things, you know, that would kind of play a part in that, would you work in both organizations.
Okay. I want to, okay, thank you for that.
Councilmember Helsley, you know, we asked some, now I think there's fewer mics on, so you can turn your mic on, back on, if you have a question or a comment.
I think, but I forgot now, it's been a while. Well, I don't think this is perfect and I still don't feel super comfortable that the people that, I mean, we're being told that the people that have been doing the work will be hired at some level, however that decision is made. And I guess that's okay, but once we approve a contract, we're back to, we can't, there's nothing we can do about it, we have it. Then you all do whatever you do and we don't get consulted anymore. So I'm like everybody else, I'm kind of reluctant to go into summer without anything, but I would like assurances that those, the people that can do the work then that have been doing it every day will be interviewed or hired to do that work.
Absolutely, if they apply. I mean, they do have to apply.
Well, I mean, if they don't apply, then they're not going to get hired. I mean, that's like, you know, I mean, that's, at the end of the day, you have to, you have to apply. So if that is the commitment, in a lot of ways, I feel like this is a do-over that is not ideal, but I will support it just because we're going into summer.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Smith?
Just a few more thoughts. I appreciated guidance from Mr. Conti around, at the highest level, making sure that Knoxville's committed to violence interruption. And I think Mr. Woods is a good example of, it doesn't have to be birthed here to be effective, and you can bring policies, an approach, a model here, and succeed. And I think Mr. Grant is an example of effective field leadership gets you results. I think, you know, much like when we originally approved the funding for Turn Up Knox, it was an approach and a strategy and a bit of a leap of faith in people to get things done and be effective, and they did. I think, at the end of the day, this body is accountable to the public. And in this regard, with empowerment comes accountability. And so, you know, Mayor, we have, and this community continues to look to you to be accountable for interrupting violence and making sure that the current numbers remain where they are. Whatever partner is chosen, how many multiple partners are chosen to do that, that they're accountable as well as are we. But at the end of the day, the accountability rests with the mayor and the leadership of the contract that you've chosen. Now, wasn't in the last meeting, but there were a couple amendments kind of being floating around at the last part of the discussion. I don't think any of those carried forward because of the postponement. But I do think, given this is a 12-month contract, correct?
Up to.
Up to. That some amount of reporting six months in and at the end of the contract from NICJR is important.
Absolutely, we'd be happy to do that.
And so, you know, can continue the discussion, but if we move to approve this, I would make an amendment that a certain amount of reporting being required six months in and another six months later for accountability, so that we're not back here again 12 months from now.
Yeah, you can make the amendment, or, I mean, you can just have it on the record and we'll put it on the calendar and make sure it's done, whatever council prefers.
Sure, I can make an amendment. I just had to, there was some language from last time that I think was pretty good.
We need a motion on the floor before the amendment can be offered.
Okay, I'll save my amendment.
I'm sorry, what? Did you say?
I'll save my amendment until discussion is finished.
Okay.
Move to deny.
That is the motion, that's the first motion that's been made. A motion has been made to deny, or, you know, to deny the contract.
Second.
And it's been made and seconded. Is there discussion on the motion to deny? Councilmember Thomas?
Yes. Sounds to me like there's a lot of questions that people aren't comfortable with. I definitely do not feel comfortable moving forward on spending between $500,000 and $800,000 to what does look to me like a makeover. We've done this before. I think the administration owns some responsibility for the breakup with Turn Up Knoxville. And as we and I discussed, we agreed to disagree. But I told you at that time that in my opinion, I thought the best thing to do was to do whatever it took to keep them intact because they were doing really, really good work. I think there's a consensus that NICJR does very, very good work. This is not about the competency of their work, it's just about whether or not we need them at this juncture in our violence prevention programs again. And we've got people on the ground that have been doing really good work in Knoxville. The data shows they've been really doing good work. And they're telling us that this is not what's needed. I don't know who else would know better than them. So I will agree for a postponement for more discussion, or I will be voting no because I just don't feel comfortable spending this much money on what looks like a repeat when I think we're further down the road with people here who are trained and already doing the work. And then I want to clarify what, this keeps coming up, it's not like nothing is being done out there right now. It's not like if we don't vote on this tonight, you know, nothing out there is being done. That's not the truth. The truth is, is the work is continuing, being done. So either a denial or a postponement is not going to jeopardize, it's not like everybody is not out there working. So I'll listen to some more discussion, but I cannot be a yes vote on this tonight. I, as I said, I'll vote for postponement for more discussion and more clarity and let the groups and the administration speak more with each other. But I don't feel comfortable supporting this contract when the people on the ground, who should know best, at least in its present form, at least the contract in its present form, they don't think it's a good thing to do. And I'm not going to substitute my judgment for theirs.
Councilmember Singh?
Thank you. Been a minute since I had my light on, so give me a moment. I want to ask a couple of questions which will help me determine if I want to vote yes or no on this. It's some clarity on, when I was at the meeting last night, I thought I heard pretty clearly that Nick Jr. would not be hiring people who were already doing this work.
That's not correct. It depends on who applies. And there's six total positions. Five of those would be violence interrupters and life coaches. And I'm sure there's more than five people who will apply and who are qualified and some of whom may have already been receiving some training from NICJR. This is a contract about management. Management to make sure that we can be accountable to the people in this community and that we can get this back up and running, supported by the city, sooner rather than later.
So I do want to ask Denzel and Rashad about a conversation that they had with Kealan that I think was pretty clear that they will not be hiring the people who've been doing this work. But before that, I have a question about when Nick Jr. was doing the technical assistance for Turn Up Knox, was part of their job to help with administrative or with reporting or with the technical aspects of reporting?
Yes.
And there was a problem with that?
They were trying to build the capacity. As you know, the Turn Up Knox contract was for several years and the capacity building wasn't going well and the communication really became very difficult and oppositional. And there were efforts to go around the Office of Community Safety and Empowerment and it just got very convoluted. We made every effort to make that work. We wanted to make it work. I put my reputation on the line to ask council to renew that contract and we really bent over backwards to make that relationship work.
Can I please ask you guys if you had that conversation with Kealan yesterday? You're in the front row for a reason, come on back up.
Yes, we had conversations. And like I say, it's possible, it's totally possible for anybody that works for us to go and work for NICJR.
But will they hire you?
No. Probably not, you know, impossible, but it's a conflict of interests if they hire us. For me to work there, I would have to, Renounce, Denounce is gone.
Well, you have a position where you're an executive director. Why would you go to work for somebody else and be?
Or if you take anybody from our team, that hurts our program, that hurts the work that we're doing right now. If you take, strip this program to create a program with six people, that's kind of like, it's...
So it's like taking apart your program to build theirs.
Yeah, it really doesn't make sense.
If you were to take two staff from Turn Up Knox and you were to take two staff from Renounce, Denounce and implement them into this new proposal, why would they come back after 12 months?
Right.
After the 12 months of working with NICJR, why would they come back to our programs? It doesn't make sense. At that point, they would have the training, they would have an elevated capacity to be able to do the work, and it will create confrontation, especially if you were to pull out a new RFP after the 12 months. We'll be right back here.
I guess what I'm saying is I would feel okay if they were actually going into the community and finding the people who are experts already and hiring them and bringing them together and maybe being an administrative support. But if they are going to start from zero, start from scratch, reinvent everything, then I can't support this contract.
I mean...
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah, so I plan on voting.
The motion on the floor is to deny the contract, so a yes vote is to be saying no to this contract. Is that accurate? I know that sounds strange, but the motion on the floor is to deny the contract. So a yes vote is a vote to deny the contract. Does everyone understand what they're voting on? All those in favor of denying the contract, please say yes. All those not in favor of denying the contract, please say no. Okay, the noes have it. The motion to deny the contract fails. Are there any other motions? Councilmember Ryder?
I'd like to ask a question.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Middlebrook. So kind of aligning the lines, the conversation just happened a few, some of the last conversation. You have somebody who's like the on-the-ground manager and there's going to be jobs posted and there's going to be five or six, I'm confused by the numbers at some point here. But anyway, a handful of violence interrupters, life coaches, whatever we're calling them, hired. What happens at the end of the 12 months? Do we have a new organization that's formed up? Or like what was just said, they go back to Turn Up Knox and Renounce, Denounce, which seems unlikely? I will agree with what Mr. Grant just said, that doesn't make a ton of sense. So I'm just trying to figure out where we're going. On the long haul, I know that, before I finish and let you answer the question, one of the things Mr. Grant said earlier is that we have a personality conflict, okay? So maybe we can all agree, things fell apart. I commented to somebody else that's kind of more, way more in the know to me that I feel like I'm in the middle of a he said, she said, and that's the way I've felt for months. And I don't know how to make sense of it, you know? So I hear you when you say that there's still work going on and there's not this lack of nothing, but there's not a clear direction and there's not a collaborative effort. And I feel like maybe that's part of the problem. Anyway, Ms. Middlebrook, can you answer what I asked, I guess? You know what I'm saying? Like what happens? We talk about what happens for 12 months, then what happens?
Yes, so simultaneous to the on-the-ground implementation of CBI work, part of the training and the training and technical assistance that's being provided to help support and build capacity for existing partners, part of the training and technical assistance that is provided to the Office of Community Safety and Empowerment in the city of Knoxville is around building and developing an RFP that could be released near the end of that process. And hopefully, the hope is that these organizations who are getting this capacity built in will be better positioned to respond to that RFP. So you'll see on page, I think it's two, of the proposal under Provide CBI Technical Assistance, the very last sentence of that is NICJR will support the city... The very last sentence of that is NICJR will support the city in identifying and onboarding the permanent CVI provider. And so in addition to helping to develop the RFP that would be released and identifying that provider, they will also help provide support in onboarding those folks to take on the long-term sustained support and implementation of the CVI work. So it's a part of the training and technical assistance that they provide to our office.
Here's my follow-up thoughts. I'm just, I'm trying to make sense of it, guys. Mr. Grant, you yourself said we're in a he said, she said, and I had somebody else that agreed that, that's a pretty good summary. It's almost like we need a mediator to move forward past this. Well, I don't know if you're going to like what I say next. I'm trying to figure out if NICJR is mediator to help us figure out. So you can only mediate for free? Because that's not how, I mean, we have...
They have to be neutral.
We're not moving forward as we are. That's the problem. We've been in this limbo for months now, and it hasn't necessarily gotten any traction or movement forward, and not clarity. And I'm trying to understand what an outside person or an outside entity that is not going to be the history of the personalities, like, I'm trying to understand the relationships with the different groups we already have here in town. I understand people have different backgrounds, different talents, different connections and relationships. I feel like we need somebody that can look at what we've got and say, this is how it can all be fit together. And that's what I'm trying to figure out, if this is the benefit of that. And I'm hearing you say that it's not, but I can't see that it necessarily isn't. So...
Councilmember Ryder, I would just say that I just disagree that this is a he said, she said, or personality conflict. I have worked with Director Le Kenia Middlebrook for many years. She's a person of great integrity. When she says something, it's the truth. When she says she's going to be at a meeting, she shows up. When, you know, she has, knows this community really well, and she and the rest of the Office of Community Safety staff have been very dedicated to this work. And the other organizations that are working in this arena are, I'm sure, mean well, and we hope that they continue their work. NICJR can be this bridge while there's capacity building. This is not about personalities. This is about the mission. It's not about any given organization. Renounce Denounce, Turnup Knox, they are relatively new organizations. They have, I'm sure, their strengths and weaknesses, but we need management help to get this work back on the road this summer. That's what you all are voting on today. It doesn't preclude further collaboration. We invite other organizations and people to take advantage of the training and capacity building during the next 12 months, so when we issue an RFP, they'll have the wherewithal to respond and be ready to perform it. That's what this is on the table before you all today. Councilmember McKenzie?
I kind of want to go back to a statement that was made, that if members of organizations were to apply for these positions and they were to get them, that they would not come back. Is it they wouldn't come back or they wouldn't be able to come back? So I want to get clarification on that.
There's a lot of things to factor in. There's certain backgrounds that you have to be able to do this work. There's a lot of things that, because of our lack of capacity, we weren't able to offer. So I'm going to ask this question. Convicted felon background, you decide to change your life and pour back into your community. You have an opportunity to make $45,000, $50,000 sharing your experiences and doing the work. NICJR is going to offer you health benefits during that 12 months, for you to be able to go to the doctor, take care, you know, take care of your family in that aspect. Who in their right mind will leave that after 12 months to go back to a Renounce Denounce or a Turnup Knox who don't have the capacity to offer those services? I mean...
There will not be NICJR and that organization after the 12 months. So they're going, the person is going to have to work somewhere. So that RFP will be put out there. So what you're saying is, it would be up to the person, but if the person wanted to come back and work with Turnup Knox or work with Renounce Denounce, they would be welcome to come back. You're just saying that they probably wouldn't want to, but if they did want to, could they come back and do the work? Because yes, they'll be doing that work, same lane, but just working under a different umbrella. So would they be able to come back? That's just kind of yes or no.
I mean, absolutely. The door will be open, but they're going to be working in a different capacity over 12 months. And so coming back to our program means you're going to be under different executive leadership. So you're going to go from a certain...
But I may have come from that leadership before, because in the grand scheme of things, and we all know realistically, to find people that are going to be able to plug into that, they're going to come from somewhere, and they've probably been doing the work, more than likely. I would say that, yes, they've been doing the work. They may come from, someone from Turnup Knox could say, hey, I want to go work here and do this and get this level of training, this level of capacity. Same thing with Renounce Denounce.
So why can't the language in the resolution simply state that you'll be hiring from Turnup Knox and Renounce Denounce?
Well, you're not going to limit yourself to just two organizations. There's other people out here doing work.
Absolutely.
So we can't limit that. So that's, I'm not getting into that part of it. I'm just saying that if they were, because you all made the statement, that they wouldn't come back. They wouldn't, why would they want to come back? Well, because they want to continue the work. If they come from that organization, why wouldn't they? And we know that there are people now, Rashad was with Turnup Knox. There are other people who started with Turnup Knox, you know what I'm saying, that went on to do other things. So that was why I'm saying, when you all made that statement, I just wanted some clarity around that.
It would be challenging to go from the capacity that NICJR is offering, a $40,000 to $50,000 salary for street outreach teams, to then ask Turnup Knox or Renounce Denounce to take on that same salary and that same capacity that a person...
They can't ask you all to pay that salary. That's not it. So let's just say that all of a sudden, you no longer have funding. You're not going to stop doing the work. You're not going to stop doing the work. Or are you?
If you take, if you take two individuals from our program right now for a year's time, it's going to destroy Renounce Denounce. We already don't have the capacity to do the amount of work that we do right now. To take those individuals away for 12 months, and then, like, there may not be a job for them to come back to.
Well, that's true. Now, that part is absolutely true, and nobody can take, if a person has a desire, nobody took you away from Turnup Knox. When people make personal decisions to do other things and go into work, so that's on them. I just, you all made that statement, and I just wanted some clarity around that. But be clear, people will go where they want to go, do what they want to do at the end of the day.
But why create, why create a space that makes it easier for individuals to make that decision? It's you guys, you guys have the power and the ability to limit that opportunity.
You want to, so you said, limit the opportunities?
For people, why put people in a position to make that tough choice? That's a tough choice to make, that you would be asking.
Councilmember McKenzie, feel free to ask as many questions you want, but, you know, he should just answer the questions and not get into a debate with you.
Well, we're not going to debate, so, I mean, people have options, and there's nothing wrong with having options. Part of the problem now is, I see division now, even with existing groups. And that didn't happen overnight. It didn't happen overnight, and it didn't happen in a vacuum. I'm glad to see people now coming together and communicating, but, and I'm not saying anything more than that, but we got enough division that we need to work through, period. So period, I'm done with that.
Okay. Councilmember Thomas?
I'll defer to Councilperson Singh.
Councilmember Singh?
Thank you. About four years ago, there were a group of 15, 20 community members working in different areas of the umbrella of violence reduction, prevention, intervention, you know, all the different aspects of that. And Andre Conti was one of the people working with us. And tonight, you were also speaking about a community-led effort to respond to these things that are going on. Would you mind coming up for a moment? So it feels like four years ago, we were working on this, and there was a resolution that passed, getting stakeholders from the community that were directly affected by this at the same table. And it was not about having city officials necessarily involved at that level, because we wanted the community to feel some trust and to not get everything ripped out from underneath them, just because that's been the decision made, right? So I'm feeling like we are in Twilight Zone, that four years ago, we were right here saying, this is what we should do, and we're still not doing it, but I hear so many, especially at the meeting last night. That's what I kept hearing, is, we want to be at the table. I have nothing against Nick Jr. I think that they have done some good work. But it really, like I was saying earlier, it feels like the opposite of healing to take it out of this community and say, these people are going to lead. You've been working with Cities United for quite a few years now, and I know the city was working with Cities United and then canceled the contract. Can you tell me what happened? Can you, and then talk about what you've been seeing with Cities United on how, building a community that represents itself?
Four years ago, I still don't kind of know, but I think some of this is kind of like deja vu. I think there was some kind of a narrative thing around Cities United being more of a, it's outside organization. It's a national part of like Nick Jr., but I'm from East Knoxville, so like, I'm born and raised here, right? So it's like, it's an anomaly kind of situation, so it's not Nick Jr., like, yeah, Cities United, I was a part of, I'm the rep. I was the rep.
But we were saying that you're not from here, so you shouldn't get the contract.
Yeah, that's kind of like the narrative, like, you know, like, well, I'm here, like, I'm from here, you know what I mean?
Cities United, not you.
I'm here, like, you know, I grew up with, I grew up with Darius, you know, y'all can, you know, check my records, but yeah, it was kind of like that narrative that kind, I guess, kind of led to it, but still, after that, I still don't, still don't kind of know. But I will say, with, in terms of Cities United, how we emphasize community-based partners and public buy-in, right? What it does is that it has community at every step of the process. So from development of a plan and/or a contract, community partners are there at the beginning. So you shop around the contract, you shop around initiative to community members for their input and their feedback, and you take that feedback, make amendments, strengthen, and enhance whatever you're doing. And then, once everybody comes to a consensus, or much consensus that you can be, then you come to a city council meeting, and people talk about it, but this is based off of several months of conversation, right? Because we deal with comprehensive public safety planning, and it deals with, again, not how do you stop the violence today, but the structural violence. So ideally, any kind of program that deals with violence reduction is a manifestation and result of community-led conversation with the city's backing, whether it be capacity building, whether it be funding, whether it be a combination of the two. So therefore, once people are at this, at this space, it's not people that are kind of left off-guard, it's a conversation based off, like, months to a year, right? Yeah. Yeah. And also, too, with the RFP, to also, I'll give him suggestions. Once we get to a point next year where there's RFP, also put the community a part of it, well, some people in the community can also be part, that decision-making about who gets the money, right? Because also marries the collaboration. People from these districts that are really affected by the violence, they know these people, so they should be a part of that process. So when it comes to governance, implementation, accountability, community should be a part of every single step of it. And also, you know, with, they may not know what community violence intervention is, but they know what pain is, right? They know what pain, they know the needs in their communities, so they should be a part of every single thing. And then lastly, with all the groups, capacity building is extremely important, all right? So that's why I'm preaching collaborative, so, but, anything else y'all got for me? I'm good.
No, thank you for that.
Cool, cool, cool. All right, cool.
Just some insight from the past.
Well, I'll be on deck and give these brothers a break here.
You're going to sit down in the front row, too? Okay. So I think I'd like to propose a postponement. Two weeks doesn't seem like a long time. What I would like to see between now and whenever we vote on it, maybe we could discuss if we should postpone for two weeks or for a month, I'd like to see, perhaps from the Office of Community Safety, to look over that resolution that was approved and all of the members, the stakeholders that were identified in it, and at least get them together once. And then I would be okay with moving forward with this contract with kind of this community oversight, working with Nick Jr.
I'll second that.
That was a long proposal.
What's your, what's the motion?
I'm not sure I still don't understand. Sorry, can you, can you say that again?
Make a motion to postpone for two weeks.
Yeah, can you explain a little bit more? I mean, it didn't have to be part of the postponement, but explain more what you...
Let me just note, the motion has been made to postpone this for two weeks, has been made and seconded.
So we just postponed it for two weeks?
Yeah, you just, there's a motion on the floor. It hasn't been voted on.
I'm talking about the last postponement.
Yes, this would be the second time I'm proposing that again.
Yeah.
And what I want, are you asking me what I want to see during that time?
Yes, thank you, because we just had two weeks of postponement, and now we've got a new...
What we were supposed to have was the meeting that we had last night, which I didn't even know about until like Friday or Saturday.
But you went last night?
Yeah.
Okay. And so tell us what you want to have happen between now and two weeks from now.
I would like, do you recall, you were pretty new on council at the time, I think. We had, there was a resolution that passed on council for, for a while, I was asking for 10% of what this police budget would be...
I remember that.
...in order to try to fund all of these groups that were doing the work already. Didn't pass with that, but it did pass with a foundation or a skeletal system of community stakeholders that should be at the table having these discussions. I wish I would have thought of this earlier and asked you to pull it, but I would like that to at least be looked at and that the Office of Community Safety be aware that those are the stakeholders that should be here, the council voted on it and approved it, and just start to get that group together, because I think that group working with this contract feels okay. But just this contract going forward, and we can't, once the contract's approved, council's out of it.
Yeah, I'm just going to follow up if it's okay.
Yes.
What organizations come to mind that weren't there Monday night or don't feel like were invited Monday night that you feel like should have been there to make? I just don't want to, I want to make meaningful, we're going to postpone it, it needs to be very clear about what needs to happen.
When I did that work, Renounce Denounce wasn't here, Turnup Knox wasn't here, there were groups here. Andre, do you recall who always involved?
Safe Haven was first.
Safe Haven was there.
Women, women who...
There were, there were quite a few people working together.
Hart was there.
Hart was there, yeah.
Before any of this violence interruption, we want to go back to invite those organizations that weren't involved, that haven't been involved in this work in the last two years.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow you.
I believe Lawrence was invited to last night, right? Was he aware of last night's meeting?
I'm sure he was.
Okay, so...
Please turn your mic on.
He was there, but then he had to leave for a commitment at church. He's been, he's been engaged with the, with the collective, if you will, off the record, trying to collaborate in partnerships.
Okay.
Counsel, just as a point of information, I think one of the things that was mentioned at the community meeting last night, or just I got assurance from NICJR, is that there will be an advisory board, and that can include members of the community, that that's part, that can be part of this contract over the next 12 months to make sure that there's accountability and even more local insight beyond the five employees who will be Knoxville, on-the-ground Knoxville people.
Mayor, I think that's a wonderful idea, and that is something, I think you're helping me define what I want.
I think that...
But I want something to get together before the council approves the contract.
Well, in my view, a two-week delay won't gain us any new information, and will also delay the ability to get this work done in a well-managed, professional manner sooner rather than later. I don't think by another two-week delay after the previous two-week delay will garner any substantive improvements or information.
I think it'd be a great improvement to have community members from here as an advisory board involved in this. I know summer's coming. Every time I hear that statement, not to lighten it, but I think of Game of Thrones, right? When George is coming. I know that's happening, but we also don't want to rush into something that doesn't go anywhere. go anywhere, and we're right back here again next year. Um, so I'm just, I want community involvement in this. I don't have a problem with the contract, but I need people from Knoxville more involved in the decision-making and the way it moves forward. So back to, uh, make a motion to postpone for two weeks.
Yeah, that ma- motion's already been made and seconded, so is there, um, you all ready to vote on that motion to postpone? Or do you want to continue to discuss?
Yeah.
Councilmember Thomas?
Not that one.
Yes, um, when councilperson Ryder used the word mediation, I couldn't agree more. The mayor spoke of the competence and integrity of Ms. Middlebrook, that's absolutely correct. Uh, worked with Ms. Middlebrook, I was one of the main advocates, I would like to say, for, uh, in the early stages of violence interruption. But the same thing can be said for Denzel Grant. So if parties are having problems communicating, um, I think it's not the solution to make a ultimatum for the leadership of Turn Up Knoxville to step down in, uh, in order to renew the contract. I think the more prudent thing would be to let the parties who are having disagreements sit down, and if it's mediated, uh, or at least try mediation and let them work it out there. Uh, I think we have the resources here and the people in place to spend that $500,000 here with existing groups. And I think we should work our own differences out without going through pretty much the same process that we went through before with, uh, NICJR. And I'll repeat, it's not any shade throwing on NICJR because they do great work. The, the issue though, is are they what we need right now? And I think we're past them and need to work together among ourselves and use those funds
Councilmember McKenzie?
Uh, yes, Mayor. So I, I'm listening to all the conversation about mediation, um, and the work and trying to, it sounds like possibly reconsider Turn Up Knox. I do want to ask Mr. Grant, could you come to the podium? And could you tell us, how many people are currently on staff at Turn Up Knox?
Currently, right now, we have five staff.
You have five active staff at Turn Up Knox now?
Yes.
And you all are still actively doing the work?
Yes, at, at a small capacity, obviously. Definitely at a very limited capacity, but we are continuing, continuing and doing the work.
Okay. And I do see, and congratulations, that you all were able to secure a grant outside of the city recently. So congratulations on that. Okay, so you have, and that includes yourself?
Yes, 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 ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ryder?
So I did say that I felt like we needed mediation, because I, um, I just, I, I mean, yeah. Um, I just, one of the things that got said at the last meeting two weeks ago was, we tried, we tried, we tried, and it didn't work out. And so I think what is being said is that this contract, having somebody with a fresh or different set of eyes without history to provide management and leadership, and let me just say, like, someone else is like, we have people with capacity to build organizations here, we do, but maybe not this type of organization, you know? Like, I might be somebody you would hire to help you build a library, but maybe not a violence interruption thing. Does that make sense? People have expertise in different areas of the world and different areas of work. Um, and picking, uh, a local, you know, leadership organization, nonprofit, to lead us from within, we're just not making it happen locally. And that's where I feel, you know, going back to what Councilwoman Singh brought up, we, we did, I, um, we did the contract with Cities United, and part of the conversation was that we should do something local, and then we went with Turn Up Knox. Um, that was also, there were people for it, there were people against it, and we went that direction, and now that's not working out. And so now it's, let's try somebody that can help us build the capacity to lead an organization with expertise in this area and not some, leave somebody high and dry without a great job with benefits and good pay at the end. I, I don't think that's a necessary given. Um, I think, you know, there are going to be these jobs posted that's part of this contract, and then at the end, there's this RFP to create or reformulate or pull together what we have here, and that doesn't mean, we can't assume those jobs aren't going to have benefits, those jobs aren't going to have this, they're not going to have that. Um, I think that's been what we've been trying to get to, and we haven't gotten there. And anyway, um, so at this moment, we have a motion on the floor to postpone, that's the only motion we have on the floor, because I was a little confused, because I felt like there were some other motions, um.
The motion on the floor is to postpone for two weeks. Any further, just, okay, so, any further discussion on the postponement? Yes, Mr. Thomas?
Yes, and, uh, just I take a different view of how far we've gotten down the road from my, my colleague. I think the data showed that numbers were dropping, you know, it wasn't for one particular reason, but, uh, the numbers were showing that our efforts were successful, and then this whole train wreck happened with Turn Up Knoxville, and here we are.
Any further questions or discussion on the motion to postpone? Seeing none, all those in favor of postponing for two weeks, please say aye. All those opposed, okay, the motion to postpone fails? Okay, uh, we'll do a roll call vote on the motion to postpone. Mr. Johnson?
Councilwoman Singh?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tom, uh, Vice Mayor Smith?
No.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fugid?
No.
Councilwoman Helsley?
No.
Councilwoman McKenzie?
No.
Councilwoman Parker?
No.
Councilwoman Ryder?
No.
Councilwoman Roberto?
No.
Mayor, the vote is three in favor and six opposed.
Okay, the motion to postpone fails. Is there any, is there another motion?
I'm going to move to approve because we need to know where we're mo- going from here, up or down, so I'm going to move to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
No.
Okay, motion's been made to approve and seconded. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I think that's six, three, motion carries. Thank you, let's take a 10-minute recess, we'll reconvene at, uh, 8:30. Councilmembers, uh, it looks like, uh, most of us are here, so we have a quorum. Uh, we'll end this recess and continue on with the meeting. Uh, please take your seats if you haven't done so already. Uh, Mr. Johnson, please continue calling out the agenda items.
11L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Knoxville and West Rock converting LLC for the processing and marketing of recyclable materials collected through household single-stream recycling and city drop-off center recycling containers for an estimated cost of $252,000 annually.
Motion made to approve and seconded, Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, so are we just switching companies here? Um, I don't know if, oh, look at there.
Public Service Director Rachel Butler's here to answer those questions.
We were using Rock something, right? Well, oh, is it not working?
There it is.
Okay.
Rachel Butler, Director of Public Service Department. Um, it's still West Rock, they change their name about every three or four years, it was just the contract had expired, and these are just the new terms of the contract.
Okay, so nothing really changing. All right, cool. Thanks.
Okay, seeing no further questions, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12M is an ordinance to amend the Knoxville City Code, Penex B zoning code, Article 12.8, landscape buffer yards, RN 2 Marla applicant, all districts.
Motion made to approve and seconded, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11N is an ordinance to adopt the revised design guidelines for the Edgewood Park City Historic Overlay District, Knoxville Knox County Planning applicant, all, District 6.
Motion made to approve and seconded, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Oh, motion carries 7-1.
11O, excuse me, 12O is an ordinance to change the basin and classification of property located at 107 Meadowview Road from RN 2 District to RN 4 District, David Varner, applicant, 6th District.
Motion made to approve and seconded, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12P, 12P is an ordinance to change the basin and classification of property located at 1608 1612 and 1616 8th Avenue from RN 4 District to IMU District, Garrett Jernigan, applicant, 4th District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded, any questions or discussion? Uh, Councilmember Ryder?
Oh, sorry, we're having a conversation over here about items. Um, yeah, um, I, I made the motion, and so I support this, I just wanted to make a record, Ms. Brooks and I had some conversations. There is, um, there are some discrepancies in this area that I would like to, with Ms. Brooks, at some point, maybe kind of look at. Um, there are properties here that are zoned residential, but the one-year plans and the sector plans are inconsistent with some of those zonings, and, um, so might take a look and revisit some of those RN fours, like, for the properties that are but- abutting behind here. Because what Mr. Frost pointed out to me is that these properties are actually in zoning violation because their zoning doesn't, their uses don't comply with their zoning, and some of that may have happened during recode, and maybe some of it happened because of me, I have no idea. But regardless, it's not all shored up, and so I will commit to go back and look at it. And so I appreciate Mr. Jernigan, we had some back and forth, and that helped me between conversations with him and conversations with Ms. Brooks. I'm like, oh, we need to shore those up, um, and maybe we can do that, um, once we've examined the pathways to get those fixed up. So that's kind of it. Yeah, thanks. It's been a long day, y'all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12Q is an ordinance to change the basin and classification of property located at 6907 Central Avenue Pike from CG 1 District to CH 1 District, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged, 5th District.
Motion made to approve and seconded, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12R is an ordinance to change the basin and classification of property located at 0 and 6714 Keck Road from CH 2 District to CG 1 District, North Creek Renovation and Construction LLC, applicant, 3rd District.
Motion made to approve and seconded, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12S is an ordinance approving the request of Mike Ballinger for an amendment to the East City Sector Plan from office to medium-density residential property located at 4602 Millertown Pike, 4th District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded, any questions or discussion? Councilmember Ryder?
And then I'm going to make a motion to combine six, uh, I'm sorry, 12ST and U, please.
Okay, motion's been made to combine items S, T, and U, has been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion to consolidate? Did you need to, did you want to speak to the consolidation?
I'm not going to speak to the consolidation.
Okay, let's vote on the consolidation. All those in favor of consolidating items S, T, and U, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion to consolidate carries, Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, I just want to point out, I had some conversation with the neighbor there, as well as Mr. Ballinger, about what his plans are. This is actually a down zone for the community, it's to go from office to medium-density residential RN 4, sorry, I'm going old-school there, my brain. Um, anyway, that will actually remove many uses, um, from the property, but it changes the setbacks, um, and makes it a little more desirable. It also, I'd like to point out to my colleagues, makes it, um, Mr. Ballinger pointed this out to me, um, they are not able to do townhouses on individual lots in the office, it has to be a 60-foot minimum lot size, and then the townhouses with RN 4 can be on their own individual 20-foot lot, so you can not go to an attorney and spend money to have them condoed out to make them sellable and owner-occupied. So bore everybody with the, the exciting weeds and details, but I think that's really important, um, as to why someone would seek this down zone. Um, they lose a lot of uses, but they gain, um, a little bit different, able to lay it out with setbacks and also with lot lines. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions or discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12V is an ordinance to change the basin and classification of property located at 1908 Grand Avenue from CN District to IMU District, J. Scott Busby, AIA applicant, 1st District.
Motion made to approve and seconded, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12W is an ordinance to change the basin and classification of property located at 305 Randolph Street, 600 East Magnolia Avenue, 611 East Depot Avenue from IMU District to DKW District, sub-district, rather, Catherine Green, applicant, 4th and 6 Districts.
Motion made to approve and seconded, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12X is an ordinance appropriating the sum of $1,500 from the Community Safety and Empowerment Budget and donating same to Knoxville Area Urban League to, in support of the 2025 National Achievers Society Sneakers Ball, an event that celebrates and affirms the academic, social, and personal achievements of high-achieving student, students in grades 10 through 12.
Move to approve and second.
Motion made to approve and seconded, any question, Councilmember McKenzie?
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote, I'm the chair of this committee.
Okay.
Even though it's not, it's not a paper.
For the record noted, that she's recusing herself from this, uh, vote. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
12Y is an ordinance appropriating the sum of $1,500 from the Community Safety and Empowerment Budget and donating same to the Souls Youth Choir in support of an educational musical event that will engage youth, rather, young people in conversations around bullying and discrimination, as well as attendance of the musical Hairspray.
Move to approve.
Motion made, uh, to approve and seconded, any questions or discussion? I do want to note that Dr. Hobby was here with member, many members of the choir, I guess they had to go home as the school night, but we do appreciate that they, uh, were here to support this agenda item. Any further questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, we'll move on to public forum, we have two people signed up for public forum. First is Greg Shore. Greg Shore, are you present? Greg Shore. Okay, see, no sign of Mr. Shore. Uh, next person is Martha Olsen, Ms. Olsen, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have up to five minutes to address council.
Yes, hello, my name's Martha Olsen, I live at 2809 Scottish Pike, and you don't need my birthday to know that I'm old. Um, and since it's older American months, I'd come and talk to you about a subject that's on my mind. Um, I'd like to point out that there's 26,000 Knoxvilleians above the age of 65, and, um, if just 20% of these are not comfortable with the smartphone, that's over 13,000 Knoxvilleians who are not welcome to park on the street downtown. Now, I spoke with some of you about this last fall, and I, I got some support, but I also heard, oh, that's okay, you can just park in the parking garage. Um, and, but the car, garages are not always convenient, and they do present extra trouble. And since that time, I was diagnosed with a condition called Um, and since that time, I was diagnosed with a condition called brachycardia. So, it wasn't just in my head that it was a struggle to walk more than a block at a time. Um, and it wasn't from being out of shape or eating too many pizzas. Um, the P, the surgeon told me that my condition was simply a result of advanced age. Other seniors will have their own conditions, it doesn't warrant a handicap tag, but they make walking distances difficult. Um, also, I'd like you to consider that some women simply aren't comfortable in a parking, parking in a parking garage. Um, and in addition to this, there are plenty of younger people who simply forget their telephone and leave it at home. So, are you wanting to, when they come downtown, are you wanting to send a message that they are second-class citizens? Um, 'cause that's certainly the message I'm getting. Um, now, here we get a little bit into the weeds, um, and I'll apologize to the secularists here, but I'm gonna read a little something from the Bible, Revelations 13. Um, "And he causeth all, both small and great, rich and poor, free and bond, to receive a mark in their right hand, and that no man may buy or sell save he that had the mark, or the name of the beast, or the number." And of course, they didn't have cellphones back in Bible time, but, um, I will say that I'm not a fundamentalist, but this is something that resonates with me. I'm not comfortable being in a world where one cannot participate in society without an app and be marked by your telephone number. And this is, this is, you know, it's just one of my quirks, but this is something that, that I'm dealing, you know, that, that I'm comfortable with. I don't wanna give my whole life over to some app that'll track me every single movement that I am. So, that is, uh, that's, you know, that's me, but there are also a number of fundamentalists in Knoxville and Baptists and conservative Christians, and I don't know how they stand on this issue, but that's another group to, to be cognizant of. Um, so, my question is, do you wanna make downtown welcoming to everybody? And I know you're not gonna do away with the system that you have, and I know there were problems with some of the meters, but I do have some suggestions. I would like you to mark more spaces, make more spaces available for the 30-minute flashers. Um, I hate to feel like a criminal just walking into my bank, you know, and that happened to me on Market Street, the, a few weeks ago. So, we could use some of those, more of those. I would, I know, I hope you still have some meters back in your warehouse, and I'd like for you to put some of them on Market Square and Gay Street, so that Luddites, we Luddites should be able to enjoy a meal downtown without walking blocks and blocks to the restaurant, you know? And I know it's, you know, you're not sure you're gonna get a meter, but the idea of coming downtown and knowing you don't even have a chance, it's disheartening, you know? Um, I, I remember how downtown flourishes having the parking garage, and I'm saying I'm not glad they're there, but, you know, the, the fact that I'm a second-class citizen and I'm gonna be restricted to going to a parking garage.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Olson. We appreciate your comments. That's five minutes.
Okay.
Uh, councilmembers, that concludes public forum, and without objection, this meeting is adjourned.